Third and final application for the board tonight is located at 1013 Ridge Road. It is the 1013 Ridge Road Splash Car Wash. The applicant is Splash Car Wash Incorporated. They requested preliminary, final site plan and subdivision approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of a 7,000 square foot car wash facility. Combined 2.16 acre parcel located in an M.C. medium intensity commercial district under section 228-10 of the code of the town of Webster.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ed Mark and I'm a licensed engineer with PDS. Here tonight also is Dave Clements, representative of the applicant and the architect Jeff Ladue. Mr. Giardino read the applicant application fairly thoroughly. I'm sure you're familiar with the site. It's almost across the road and directly opposite Wendy's, immediately south of 104. The proposal is to construct a 7,000 square foot car wash. We are doing splash car washes all over New York State and there's a very aggressive plan that they are pursuing. And I'll invite Mr. Clements forward to answer specific operational questions. I think you'll find that he knows more about the car wash industry and business and construction to operation than anybody you've met who's been involved for 25-plus years in that endeavor. The engineering is very straightforward. I trust you had a chance to review the plans. We propose ingress to the site at the southeast corner. We maximize stacking on the site. We're well over 70 potential cars on site stacking to either utilize the single tunnel or the two pull-through car washes immediately to the west of the tunnel. Typical infrastructure for this is public water, sanitary sewer with grit and oil-water separators. Drainage will comply with the DEC stormwater permit and that is a source of discussion with the town. We understand that there's a history to the development of this and the construction of the pond that's immediately southeast of our site. Chairman Kishani, I wonder if you maybe have some insight to this from when the camp proposal went through? The stormwater proposal is to treat green infrastructure practices on-site. We're planning to use that existing pond for detention. We're awaiting specific feedback in the original engineer's report. We've reached out to Peron Engineering on that. Josh, I don't know if you have a chance to have anything to file on that, the original engineer report, that would be helpful. We could provide it on-site, but as you can imagine, providing detention below surface is quite expensive and with that pond immediately south of our site, which we're confident was designed for development of this site, we want to make use of the detention in that pond. There is some discussion about the ingress from the property to the east. I understand that both the property owner and the applicants have been in touch with them and that there is no legal easement for that parking across the north section of our site that is to be removed and there is no direct connection between our property and theirs. We provide a typical landscape and lighting plan. All lighting will be contained on-site. We do have about a half a foot candle near the perimeter. We suspect that that's acceptable to the town given it's a commercial use, but having to make adjustments if you think that's necessary. With that, I'd be happy to answer the questions that you may have.
Yeah, parking, go back to that just for a second there. Is that a line, is that the property line or on it or how does that work?
So the parking to the east of us is on their property. There's about a nine-inch gap between our east property line and the west edge of their pavement, so we can develop this without impacting that. The parking I was referring to was along the north edge that's being removed. If you look at an aerial, you'll see a bunch of north-south facing parking spaces that I'm not sure who actually uses that, but it's not part of an easement and it is on this property wholly.
So the cars are actually on your line though, right?
Well, not on the east property.
Yeah, on the east property, that's right.
Those are on their property. We're not impacting those at all. There is a gap between our property line and their edge of pavement. I think there was a misunderstanding of where that property line fell.
Okay, alright, that's where I'm at.
Dave Clements, representing Splash Car Wash. To speak to that, there was questions and again, part of our due diligence before we even made applications to both this planning board and zoning board was to investigate those things. Aerial maps and actually some of the software used by engineers showed there may be an approachment from one property to the other to the neighboring doctor's property, AccuSite, and as it turns out after we went out and surveyed it, licensed survey, there is none. It was just a aerial depiction that was misrepresented. So there is no impact to the east at all. As we discussed when we went to the zoning board, we suspected the owner and developer of the property tried to solicit a sale of this property over the past 15-plus, 17-years. Put that little strip of matcha pulp in there to show it's kind of like, you know, build-ready type thing for a future tenant or a future developer. There is an alluded to, there is no easements, there's no legal possession of that property. We spent a lot of effort to verify that, worked it out with the neighboring, the neighboring property owner, which is AccuSite to the east, and the matcha pulp will be removed. And our proposal is to present it into green and use it for our purposes.
Josh, did he give you a copy of the DRC comments?
Yes.
You got them? Do you want to go through those a little bit?
Certainly. So the first few bullet points aren't actually questions, they're just kind of notes about, for example, the engineer's report that we submitted is under review. DRC comments are very miter. DOT had no comment. We did receive the use variance on August 23rd. We do propose to use a stormwater management pond. And then the first question is how does the applicant intend to deal with property line splitting the westerly row of parking in the AccuSite parking lot? Will there be an easement in place? As we just discussed, there is no actual impact on the westerly row of parking and there is no easement and we're not impacting that westerly line of parking whatsoever. Project will need a SWIP due to the disturbance exceeding the town's 25,000 square foot threshold. We understand that we're in the process of doing the calculations and we're awaiting hopefully the original engineer's report for that stormwater management pond because we do want to make use of that, but we'll gladly supply the SWIP once we get that report from the town. Question about if water will be recycled on-site, there is no proposal to recycle water on the site. Engineer report is under review. We note that, a note about the sewer department needing to tell a lies to lateral to see if any whys exist on that parcel, we understand that. And the question lastly for the sewer department is will there be any restrooms? Yes, there is a single bathroom, both for the public and for the employees. Howie Department asked about the elimination of the cross-access drive and requested curbing placed in the northeast corner. We do propose curbing around the curve in the northeast corner right through here. Lastly, has AccuSite--
Where's that curbing negotiation?
And there, okay. I just want to clarify what the intent of that comment specifically was. It's where the existing access drive parallel to Ridge Road that's being removed. So when you come into the Wendy's there, you're going to be removing that drive aisle?
Over here.
But there's no curbing shown to stop anybody from entering into the car wash.
Understood, yep, yep.
So that was the intent of that comment?
Yes. Thanks for that clarification. We'll add that. Lastly, has AccuSite been made aware of the plans to eliminate the northerly cross-access ways? I understand, you know, Dave had those communications with them before he combined the property and there is no easement in place. And the owner of that property is okay with that being removed?
Anybody any questions or?
I just have a curiosity, maybe you can answer for me. Entrance and exit to this property, to the car wash is going to be off of Ridge Road. Am I correct on that?
Well, it's on the existing road immediately west of us, but into our property it's at the southeast corner.
And the DOT, New York State DOT, had no comment whatsoever?
Well, no, because we're not doing any work in the right-of-way at all.
What about no comment?
No comment from them either?
No comment at all. Well, it's designed actually to try and encourage traffic to go over to Shoe Craft Road by way of the southern road there.
Yeah, that way I like it.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what's going for this thing.
Again, consistent to both preliminary meetings with this board, UCMZDA and all the municipality officials that commented, has led us to a path of accessing it from the rear. Encouraging people to split their, I think that's the ingress to either Shoe Craft or Ridge, to let people decide what's the best path for them.
So the AccuSite, they're going to wind up having people come in from the south road, right?
Correct.
Instead of coming across the property.
Correct, they'll likely access with the same road as we will, the west of our site and they'll just bypass ours and they've got a drive aisle that comes up through the west property line.
I'd just like to bring up something that I noticed. It appears that there's been a change from the original concept that was sent in to what we're looking at here tonight that might be a little problematic. I'm trying to understand what was initially sent in, showed a 20-foot setback from an AccuSite property, which means the 20-foot buffering between properties in the commercial district. And I'm not seeing that here on, within this plan set. It seems that something shifted or--
Is that to a parking space? The setback that you're referring to?
To the property line. So the concept I have here shows a 20-foot green space in between the drive aisle of an AccuSite, which is per code. And then the one that we're looking at tonight, the drive aisle is right up to the property line. So I'm just wondering what changed. It looks like maybe the center landscaped island was significantly reduced and the parking--
I think we went with a double entry lane. I think that's a single and it widens out into two, but, so you're saying our east limit of pavement has to have a 10-foot setback to the property line?
No, it's a 20-foot, it's called a buffer area, 20-foot buffer area. Property line, yeah, asphalt to property line.
So, but it looks to me like AccuSite doesn't have that along their west boundary there.
That's true. They may have gotten a variance for that when that was built. Which we can look into, but I just want to clarify, this plan set is the most recent and up-to-date?
Yes.
So we're going to have to look into what variance existed for the property in store, but that poses a challenge. I mean, that's not to say you can't go back to the zoning board, but when we asked if there were any other area variances, we wanted to take care of it all in one meeting. We were told that no other variances were needed.
So I'm told that we can modify that? You said is it 10 or 20, I'm sorry?
The requirement's 20. You can ask it for less than that.
This is, this is actually PDD, isn't it?
Yeah, technically.
So if it's PDD, I think we can-- There is setbacks, I said, X.
There is some flexibility in that.
Yeah.
What's all the parking for there? There's a lot of parking here.
So there are 22 on-site spaces for vacuums and four additional spaces for employees. It's part of the operation of the car wash.
Oh, so all those vacuums near the entrance lane that Josh was talking about, those spaces there are all vacuums or the ones up against the building are all vacuums?
Yes and yes, so--
Oh, so the vacuums are all inside?
All but four of the parking spaces are for vacuums.
Oh, wow.
And-- And I believe the four, kind of for the employees are centrally located right here. You can tell they're a little bit smaller because the vacuum spaces are quite large. They allow for the sand to reach in.
Just wondering if there's an opportunity there. It sets a lot of vacuum spaces for that kind of small space and usually you have a couple of low cars that don't have that many vacuuming all at once.
Yeah, I'll let Dave speak to that because he knows it quite well.
It is true that's a lot of vacuum spaces, but the current business model and the free vacuums, all of our patrons, any patron that uses our washes can use the vacuum services free as well as mat cleaners and some other accessories that we offer there for free. So this is a pretty sizable car wash site. We suspect that we're going to have a lot of people liking using our vacuums and we don't want to have people waiting. We'd rather have empty spaces than people waiting or queued up to get into a free vacuum The balance between those two things is what we're up against. Probably why we shifted that road out actually is we just looked at it as soon as we could.
You have a landscape drive, I'm looking at it here. Can you increase some of this? I mean, they're like 15, 18 inches high and they're just little scrubs. First guy with a lawnmower is going to take them up. Like when the entrance coming in off of Ridge Road, you got a 20-foot setback from the roadway, correct? And I'm looking at the drawings--
So you'd like to see some more immediately west of our building?
Yes, and I think you should, yeah, I'm not a landscape engineer by any stretch, but architect.
I'm not either, but I would agree that we do have a sanitary lateral and tankage that will go along that west side. I mean, we'd be happy to increase it where we can, but we also want to show you something that's realistic and not make you think you're going to be getting, you know, huge aspens and sugary spruces and things of that nature.
No, it's like, you know, rope pines or something like three-four foot pines, you know, something that's--
Sure.
Everby-y or whatever, something that dresses it up. That's, looks like, I'm looking at what's there, they don't look like there's-- 15, 13 to 18 inch spruce, that's not a very big juniper. The highest plant is two feet. I think there should be some serious landscaping down at, along Ridge Road, that area there. That should be, that should have some trees put in there, some heavy vegetation. I'll give you an example, one, is if you look at Marina Crest, where did that, I don't remember that one. They've got some nice trees in the front, nice berm in the front, you know, just, and they maintain it very well. Something that's attractive, you know, for the roads.
We're working with Heidrich Fisher on this, so--
Oh, I know him.
We'll--
He's been around a month or two.
Yeah. One or two.
Yeah, hip. Yes. That's, you see what I'm saying along Ridge Road there?
Yes, but--
We just got to add to the two easements that are right sanitary storage.
Yep, there are a couple of easements along our north boundary, so we could augment plantings in line with the plantings that are out there. See, there's like three clusters.
Yeah, there's just three little, yeah.
We can add to that, sure.
There was a tiny used dam, remember? You had the engineer, it was a drawing and we were looking the whole, yeah, for the landscape, to make it work, you know, just landscaping. Yeah. Yeah, if you, yeah, show some landscaping that you're proposing to do and then some drawings showing it, what it's looking like, you know, just a separate sheet.
An actual render.
Yeah. Because this is just heap flats, it's, the term I always use is a heap flat on a pad, you know, and really didn't look like much of anything. Back to the pond, I think when that was built, Josh can move it up, but I'm 99% certain that that pond was designed for that whole area that it drainage. I believe there's two ponds back in there too, and one, and there's another one back through there. Alright, what else, anything else you guys?
Just trying to run the record.
What's that?
Because west of the solid was on the concept. Did something change with the entrance and exit? I kind of think it was a single--
That's what Josh was saying.
We had, they were always in the, when they were here to the south, they were a little farther apart, a single-lane entrance and dual exit.
But was it one connection to the road or two connections?
No, there was always two. We actually moved the exit away from the stop sign to give people a queued-up area. It was closer to the intersection in the concept, the note was it was down here, so you'd come out--
That's what's different.
Yeah, so we made it so that you could get it squared up and--
Just doesn't show the arrows.
Is that, is that road a town road or is it still a private?
That's private road. The piece out, when that, when, what is that, Walton, what is that?
Private?
Right, yeah, when that was developed there, when they came in with that, that was a stipulation, had to be built to town standard for a town road. I mean, it was going to be a dedicated road. Then it got changed, but the initial piece going in, when they first had that, that was a piece of dedicated road after that, so it's all just dry, dry wood and now--
So it doesn't matter, it's--
No. Alright, the building, you got brick on it?
We got brick on it and we don't have a blue roof. Jeff Ladue--
Arctic depth, right.
Come on up here and speak into this mic before you get yelled at like the rest of them.
Sorry. Jeff Ladue with Licensed Architect with Form Two. The intent right now, as it's shown, is using, they use, the sites, the new sites and the renovated sites, we're using stone, so that's what we're proposing, but would be willing to move it to brick.
No, neither one is attractive, that's--
So the idea was, I mean, we've gone through a couple iterations, we saw the more flamboyant colors at this point, we sort of heated the advice and the guidelines of the town of Webster and made the modification. So the stone was in keeping with the current design features we're using, just adding more of, using more traditional materials with the LP siding, which is an engineered wood product, is another--
So the stone, where you have the gable--
Yeah, it's all across the bottom.
And then it's all across that--
There's a stone sill cap and then--
At the opposite end where the tower is, what's that? At the opposite end--
These end?
Yeah.
The tower there was to use, there's a product that is applied, it looks like limestone. So that was the concept of those ends, so that they had sort of horizontal reveal and basically pick up the, basically the stone cap, which has that sort of limestone look at the ends. So that's what we're showing and proposed.
Okay, so when I'm looking at the drawing that I've got here--
So that's the--
The door is on the end, what am I looking at there?
Yeah, that would be the outboard--
That's the outdoor?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the outdoor. So the indoor, which would be facing Ridge Road, is the opposite end?
That's correct.
Do you have a position on there too?
Well, the tower, the tower is here, it's facing this, it is facing--
Ridge Road, that end?
Yes, yes.
Is it, do you have that on there?
That's right.
No, I mean, can you see it from Ridge Road side?
Do you have a bracket?
I don't have a bracket, yeah, provided.
That's where you wanted to look, what's going on in the work wall?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's very, it's very similar to what you see here, the difference being on that side the door is a high-speed roll-up, so it's kind of basically a clear plastic sort of vision panel on it. You can see it on the elevations. And then the material, basically what you're looking at material-wise would be the same on the north side, the only difference is that the tower is slightly two feet lower than the tower that we're looking at in this picture. Hit it.
No, do we have, Josh, have you got set, elevations on it? This is just all--
I believe that's what they distributed it tonight.
It's on, you have one in front, it's on the front.
Oh, this came later, editing it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I--
I'm sorry.
I figured the distance whether it could be--
Okay.
Sorry.
Alright, so this is the south, north elevation. Alright, now around that, can you, what's that large clapboard type thing going in there? What is that, by the door?
Down here?
No, on the opposite end. We just, on the north end, north elevation? Where the garage, where the doors going, yeah, right there, what is that? Can that be dressed up something? Because that's the main part really.
You're talking here?
Yeah, all that main section right there on the north elevation.
Yeah, you could--
You know, I need to put some of my stone on there or something.
Yeah, we could add, at the end, we could change out that material and do something-- We can do something similar to the east elevation below it. Where we're using the stone--
Something that dresses it up, because from Ridge Road you want it to look--
Yep, so we could take that and use it on the Ridge Road side, so--
That would, I think we need that.
Yep.
You guys stand up, alright with that?
Yeah, that's good.
No, it's--
That would dress it up, I mean, that's the main focus right there.
Well, it would look more like the east elevation then, with more--
Yes, yeah.
It would just look more like the east elevation if you're consistent. Do you have building materials? I know sometimes people bring in building materials, circles of the stone--
I don't, I don't have, what I can provide.
It's actual stone too, right? Not like the rough, whatever it is, like block that hits it on.
No, it's actual stone, yes. It's a veneer, it's two and a half inch. I think it's called out on the material key to the top right, the materials are keyed out.
I see, yeah.
But, no, it is actual stone, it's not a split base block. It's not a split base plot.
Thank you for that.
No, yeah, no, that's...
No, so the, this, the first generation of this was in Fayetteville Village, and this is just a variant of that. So its proximity and its guidelines, which are very similar, that's where we're going so that it's more traditional and would be more in keeping of what you might have found in the village prior to...
Okay, let's do this then maybe. We can work with preliminary approval and then complete the drawings with everything and show us some of these technical issues. Yeah, one other thing to want to talk about is the, the traffic flow. So most, we talked about a little bit of suspension. Most of that is coming in hopefully from the side road. But it can come in, but most of it leaves the other way. Is that the way it, out of that, goes out the back or to Shookraft Road?
Well, so we can't prevent people from heading back out of Ridge, but our, we expect a vast majority to head out to Shookraft.
The encouragement is that?
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's why we turned it. Yeah, I think people get the right, making writing in terms of... No. Yeah.
It'll be good. It'll start to occur to more people.
It always amazes me how self-regulated traffic can be. And the nice thing about car washes is they intercept business that's already out there. You guys are gonna end up using this, I assure you. It's part of your daily routine. So it's not like you're gonna say, hey, we're gonna go get a car wash. You get it on the way to work, on the way to dinner, on the way home. And it's part of your travel path. And you know the area well, so you know if people head out to Ridge, it's gonna be impossible to get out. You won't do that in a level of Shookraft. So it works pretty well.
All right, then, so what we're doing is fixing that north elevation, putting some serious decoration in there, right?
Well, would you do that to the north and the south? Just so they look the same? So the north, the south, the east, the west, they're all...
Yeah, that'd be the same.
Well, yeah, I think, I think according to code, if I'm not mistaken, Josh, if it's a PDD, which this was designated as the section, I think we can waive the 20-foot, you know, make it whatever. I don't know what it even is in there. I can't even see it. What is that convention? On that sideline to the east. I am to...
Looks like it's just over five feet. So I've done several PDDs and PUDs all over the place in your right turn, Shanti. Typically setbacks are changed as a result of that.
That was the reason for the PDD.
Exactly.
Yeah, let's see. All right, what else? Any concerns or... I'd like to see increased landscaping and an actual drawing of a landscaping. You know, show what you put in there and stuff. I think we should, I think we should, drainage is okay with that, that should be an issue there. What else?
We have a light running on?
We talked about changing this little stuff on the side. Just aesthetics of the building, right? Okay, so that we want to fix up and show you all landscaping.
Yes, all the right room.
You know, four-foot pines along that edge of roadway or something. And out by the road, look at, look at Marina there, yes. Take a look and see, give you an idea. I mean, something that they maintain it nice and that's one of the attractive car dealers. He keeps it rolling a little nice.
We're happy to do that.
John, what was that, John, you said? Lighting?
I think you mentioned lighting. You said it's all contained on the side, except there was one light that may go in.
Well, we have some lighting contours along the west and the south in particular that are at a half a foot candle. I guess I've asked it more, to what level do you want to see at the property line? Because I mean, it is a commercial district. So typically, you know, we're told to keep it under one foot candle. Most people don't even know what that is, but just for your knowledge, it's an average birthday candle held one foot from your line. Very scientific.
I guess the response to that is it's one of those spirit town laws in the past. There's a number of these passed, but we don't know if it should be. There is a town law.
Okay. I'll look into that and we will comply with that. If it's zero at the property line, it will be zero. If it allows up to one, we'll make sure we stay at one. If I could just get clarification, if it is indeed a PDD, this board is comfortable with our entrance the way it's shown and you're not looking for us to increase the green space there?
Where are you talking?
On the east property line there.
On the east, on the eastern. We only have five feet in there. Yeah, I don't think that, you know what? I'd rather see it more increased, you know, to the north, the front. You know, where it's going to be seen most. That's pretty well hidden over there. There's Carter's Park there. You can have Carter's Park, you know, a couple feet from the bushes there. What do you guys think? I don't know. Let's see.
They have to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Focus that, two words gonna show.
We got it. We got it.
Uh, what else? The sign is going on the, pretty much that's the sign that goes on there? The east elevation?
No, they're showing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the sign shown is typical. We have to confirm the final locations, but that is typically the one Adalian type. And then there's three vacuums, two car wash signs that are shown. It's basically...
Probably, you know, it'd be good then too is maybe when you come back in is itemize where your signs are. You know, how many signs, what they are and where they're located. Is that a sheet, you know what I mean?
Yeah, there's a sign package provided that if it hasn't been, it will be.
Okay, I don't, I didn't see.
They'll show site signs, structural signs.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's better to get the signage approved as part of the site.
Yep, we can do that.
We think there's some trips later down the road.
All right, so if you move with the former area, what do we want to see here? Increased landscaping in the north end. I'll see the north end entrance around the garage door. All right, let's get this started.
No, I think so. Elevations to look to the east and west elevation.
So, all, you want a motion, what are you doing? So, motion, go please. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Motion for unlisted action. The Town Webster Planning Board considers request by applicant Flash Power Wash Incorporated to construct 7,000 square foot wash facility in a 2.16 acre parcel having ESPD number 079.15-1-16.003, located at 1013 Ridge Road in the median intensity commercial perspective. The Planning Board determines that the proposed action is an unlisted action based on the following. Number one, the action includes 7,000 square foot facility, which exceeds the 4,000 square foot threshold for a tactile action as defined by section 617.567 for non-residential structures. The Planning Board determined that the action is subject to senior agency review pursuant to part 617.6B4 of SEAKER and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The Planning Board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The Planning Board has given consideration to the criteria for determining significance. It's set forth in section 617.7C1 of SEAKER and as one, consider the information contained in the Certified Environmental Assessment Form Part I, dated July 5, 2022. Number two, consider public comments directed to the Planning Board during the... To be a couple of times. Sorry. September 6, 2022. And three completed parts, two and three of the Environmental Assessment Form. Now therefore be resolved if the Town Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of not significance. Be it further resolved if the Town Webster Planning Board is authorized a takeoff action, usable if necessary, to file a negative declaration of discharge for the Town Webster's Planning Board's responsibility as lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved if the Town Webster Planning Board use of the information and analysis above to resolve supporting the action and discuss the action by the Town Webster Planning Board as documented in minutes for this meeting and that the proposed action will not result in any significant environmental events. Be it further resolved if the Town Webster Planning Board therefore makes a determination of not significance. Be it further resolved if the Town Webster Planning Board, based on both reasons, issues a negative declaration as evidenced by its determination.
Motion. Before we vote on that, I have a question. Did you, I know this is a public area, but now a theory, did you open up the floor? No, I didn't, John. You're right, thank you. Anyone? Guess we're closed. Want to say anything?
No.
We'll close the public area. We'll get back up. Thanks, John. Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Preliminary approval, go with that. Everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
All right, then we'll make it. Well, one of the things, we'll put these in. We want to increase the landscaping and the size of the shrubbery to be satisfactory to the board. When you see it, you know what it is. Sure, if you're not seeing it, I can't tell you what to do. The other thing was enhance the building design a little bit. Need more stone, whatever you got on it. What else? Anything else you need to have there? You want to, Josh, you have anywhere a curve to be, need to be replaced in that spot? Anything else?
Lighting package, signage package.
Lighting, yeah. You probably should have, you know, that would be, that's true, John, too, is have the cut sheets of whatever you're using for your lighting, the types of fixtures, you know, where they're going. That's generally something we always get. We should probably get some samples of the materials we use. You want to see some material samples? Some small pieces of whatever. Bring that in. Anything else?
I mean, that's everything I can discuss.
Those are the main items, right?
Yeah.
All right, and we'll add those. Those are part of the preliminary and we'll make that subject to the PRC comment and subject to a letter of credit posted with the Town Webster. The applicant has already obtained his variances, the used variants. Normally, and it's being conveyed to the town, it would be the patricity. So usually all improvements should be... All improvements shall be constructed according to specifications of the Town Webster. All roadwork, roadway construction to be in accordance with special regulations set forth by the town. Site work to be in compliance with the standards of the Town Webster. Preservation of trees, there's none there. Compliance with all requirements of any state, county, and town agency. Well, we'll put this one, address the drainage. Just verify that. Address the drainage, lighting signage, landscaping, buffering, burping, snow storage. Downspouts, how are you doing your downspouts? I can move on now. You going to the stairs or the...
Underground, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so downspouts are connected. Depict all parking and your preliminary design. I believe you have that. And proceed to final approval. Okay, you have a motion in a second.
Mr. Shanti?
Aye.
Mr. Mark?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Pencil?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Germin?
Aye.
Okay, what's up with that?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, see if you can come up with some good landscaping. Ordinarily, you'd get a good design.
We got the masonry this time. We got the landscaping next time.
What's that?
We got the masonry this time. We got the landscaping.
I'm surprised you missed something after that.